Yeah.
Yeah.
Pulling the meeting to order, could I get a roll call please?
Sarah Allen. John Chartier absent. Melissa Clark here. Mary Ann Dwyer.
Here.
Lisa Cavalluna.
Here.
Kevin McClellan.
Here.
Diane Salter.
Here.
Jan Meek.
Here.
Dr. Schmido.
Here.
Dr. Outlaw.
Here.
Okay, and before we do the pledge allegiance, we ask that you join us in a moment of silence. We're heartbroken over the death of one of our students as last week the Brandon schools community lost a recent 2020 grad. In honor of A.J. Acirico's memory, we ask that you join us in a moment of silence. Our hearts and thoughts go out to his family and friends and the entire community. If we could all stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag
The flag.
of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, and I just want to also now add to the agenda that we're going to do a closed session to discuss attorney-client privileged information after the citizens input. Okay, next, if anybody, I don't know if we have anybody listening or not, but if you want to say any comments during our public comments and questions on agenda business or at the end of the meeting for just citizens input, please send a chat to Maria Shivering and she will get you to come on in. And Maria, do we have anybody that's requested to talk?
Um, I do not.
And this would be on agenda business?
There is no one requesting.
Okay, next, I need an approval of the consent agenda, please.
Move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I can.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say yes, but do a roll call, please.
Sarah Allen. Sarah Allen. Run it away.
Unmute Sarah.
Not.
Melissa Clark, yes. Mary Ann Dwyer.
Yeah.
Lisa Cavalluna.
Yes.
Kevin McClellan.
Yes.
Diane Salter.
Yes. Okay, next, I have information and discussion items. First, board committee reports. Besides me, does anybody have a committee or update on any of things going on?
No ma'am.
Okay, I got my Oakland schools. I got a couple of things. First of all, just FYI, the Oakland Schools Board held a meeting on June 1st. They basically adopted a resolution authorizing additional financial support to some school districts due to the COVID-19 pandemic. So just FYI, they did do that resolution less than a month ago. Also, end of May, beginning of June, they started some chatter about wanting to do a $427 per pupil enhancement millage. Would have been approximately 1.4 mils. When I received their email, I did respond right away and I voiced that for the Brandon School District and hopefully some of our other smaller districts, that if this vote were to pass, it would be an extreme financial burden on our residents. They wanted this over 20 years. I expressed again a strong opposition to the proposal and it's my understanding they have withdrew this for at least this year. So just FYI, I think they're thinking about maybe doing this in the future, but I spoke up quickly and so did some other districts too. So trust me, me alone would not have stopped them, but many other districts spoke up and my understanding even superintendents. And then last that I have is when I was at the last government meeting, I volunteered and I was selected to be on a task force as part of the Oakland Schools to address issues of diversity, equity, and inclusion. It's a task force that needs to, we have to submit a written proposal that'll have our vision and mission. Then it goes to the Oakland Schools Board for approval. It's my understanding there's a Dr. J. Marks at Oakland Schools who was employed under the title of diversity and equity consultant, so we're hoping to have him come aboard. This task force came about from Oak Park School District. And so we're going to see if we can get some visions, directions on what is coming more, like say outside just our district. But again, I was selected, we haven't met yet, I think we're looking at meeting virtually next week in Google Docs, but that's just an FYI, I guess I can get information to you, if there's anything, I will pass it on to you. That's all I got, and finance report, Jan, take over.
Yeah, hi, good evening. Tonight is our annual budget hearing, 2021 budget hearing and truth and taxation hearing required by law. As you're all aware, we've been discussing this budget for months and recently made some changes and that we all agreed on. So I've got a PowerPoint that will summarize what we've talked about and add some, you know, some new information. So I'm going to share that screen right now. Okay, can everybody see that?
Diane.
Yes.
I hear my name, go ahead. I see it.
Wait, okay, I'm going to start, is that okay? I thought I heard. Okay, so.
It's there, it's there, Jan.
It's there, yeah. If you need to, if you're, if the pictures are covering, I think everyone knows you can pull the pictures over to the right or so that they're not covering the PowerPoint. Okay, so this is our annual budget hearing and what we'll be covering, it's our truth and taxation hearing, the general fund budget, the student activity fund budget, food service fund, and childcare fund. I'm going to start with our property, our 2020 property tax levy, our non-homestead levy, 17.8706 mils, no change. The non-homestead property value, this year 150,61899. It was an increase of 3.1% over last year. And as you're aware, we have a split levy in Brandon, half and half, summer and winter. Our debt levy stays the same at 12.16 mils, and that is on all property. The taxable value of all property, 673,316848. That is an increase of 4.3%. And again, the split levy, summer and winter. Any questions on our proposed tax levy?
Nope.
Okay. So now I want to just briefly discuss the final 2019-20 because there were some, there were some big changes that we decided on. The biggest one is this 1920 final budget includes a $600 per student proration. Again, we don't know if that's going to happen, but the budget does include that, or $7,511 per pupil. That is a decrease from our 1920 original allocation. No change in categorical funding, no special education cost adjustments. The expenditure side, due to the three-month shutdown, we did see a savings of approximately seven, little over 700,000. And that came from these areas, our security and operations savings, that would be utilities, that would be our security services, that would be DM Burr. That was the biggest part of our savings, 260,664. Transportation, we renegotiated that, or there was an amendment, I should say, to that contract. It saved us about 136,000. Athletics, coaches, there was no spring sports and supplies and that type of thing, 82,284. Subcosts, typically the last, the end of the school year, we do have our subcosts go up. Obviously, we did not have that this year. And then supplies and miscellaneous, anything from a few pairs to everything is pretty much frozen on the supply side and some other minus miscellaneous. So this number does help us if we do in fact get that $600 proration. That's it on the 1920, that is, there's a resolution for the 1920 final amendment tonight. So now I want to talk about next year's budget, our 2021 proposed budget assumptions. We are assuming that we will have a $500 student reduction over the original 1920. So another way to say it is it would be a $100 increase from where we're ending with our final 1920 budget. So we're looking at a per pupil of $7,611. We are looking at an enrollment decline of 100 students. We are receiving a PA-18 increase from Oakland Schools, that's special ed millage, I already have the number on that, 108,610. Budget's assuming no change in categorical funding at this point, there's been no word from the state either way, no special ed cost adjustment. And we do have some new Oakland Schools funding for literacy in the 2021 year, approximately 160,000. That's going to help offset our literacy coaches' costs. On the expenditure side, we have reduced staff through layoff and retirement, 9.3 FTE. Clerical staff reduction, 1 FTE. Administrative reduction, 0.4 FTE. Medical cost increase, 1.65%. And our MIPSers retirement cost is going to 28.21%. That's the highest level, there's several different levels on MIPSers, but about half our people are at the highest. Also, this budget, this 2021 budget includes $150,000 for capital outlay for our buildings. As you're aware, we do not have any other source other than general fund for capital outlay. Technology, 12,000, it's a small amount, we've got some category two funding, our cost would be 12,000. This budget does not include any, no line item for security guards, however, the police liaison is in the budget as prior years. Transfer in of 80,000 from food service, we typically get about that amount. This budget includes a transfer out childcare of 41,643. I'll get to that a little bit more when we talk about, when I talk about the childcare budget. And this budget also includes a pay freeze for all employees. So to summarize our fund balance for both this final and next year, we're looking at the 1920, this is general fund, with the $600 proration of a deficit, an operating deficit of about 504,144. Next year, again, with the reduction, the $500 reduction of operating deficit, 140,191. Fund balance at the end of this year, we're looking at 3,619973 or a little over 15%. 2021 will go down slightly, 3,479782 or 14.84%. And again, based on all the assumptions that we've discussed and that I'm discussing tonight. Our assigned fund balance stays at 2 million until there would be action taken to remove that. So that leaves the unassigned fund balance, 1920, about 6.77%, 2021, about 6.31%. Any questions on general fund before I move on to the other funds? Okay, good, thanks. So the student activity fund, new this year, the GASB rule is that we had, the board had, was supposed to adopt the budget, part of the budget is the student activity fund. So that is actually in the resolution, the student activity fund. I believe you're all aware, that's our fundraising, that's student council, that's the robotics money we get from GM, pop sale, anything, student activity fund. So I just wanted to highlight some things on this, to do with the budget with the student activities. That is now subject to budgeting requirements, like I said, per the Uniform Budgeting Act. GASB 84 is the name of the standard that is implemented, it was implemented last July. Student activity funds now are subject to school code allowable uses. So that we have more, we always had control over them, but we were mandated now to apply the same standards for these funds that we do for general fund. We have, in Brandon, we have 141 activity funds. The revenue last year, 437,999, I'm sorry, the current year, 1920, we spent approximately 369,205. Typically, we spend closer to what we bring in, but the school shutdown, I believe, impacted that. So our projected fund balance, June 30th this year, is 425,829. We did have a fund balance coming in. And that is spread across all buildings. I do have a breakdown of our fund in the district. Any questions on student activity funds before I move to food service?
No.
Okay. Food service highlights for 1920, there was a 2% plus steps wage increase for the, for that bargaining group. No increase in lunch prices. Our free lunch eligible student participation was 60.11%. Our reduced lunch eligible student participation, 56.78%. Our paid lunch student participation, 21.34%. Their total student population participation with our school meals, 36.43%. Food service highlights this year, to continue, free breakfast, about 23% of our students, reduced breakfast, about 13%, paid breakfast, just 2%. And then our total student population participation for our breakfast program is about 10% of our students participate in our breakfast program. Our food service has always done very well, we're going, this year, just a slight deficit due to the situation. 1920 projecting about a $17,000 operating deficit. Next year, about a 2,000. And that's assuming next year that we do have reduced participation due to perhaps more students choosing a real, learn from home option. Our fund balance is very healthy, food service, 1920, we're going to end about 312,164 or 32%, 32.4%. 2021, we're looking to go down just slightly, 310,052, or still over 30%. Again, these are very much subject to change depending on how many students we have in the building eating lunch every day. The operating transfer in 1920, as I discussed a few minutes ago, 80,000 and projecting 80,000 again next year. That's our food service or analysis or assumptions I'm using there. I'm going to move to childcare, no questions on food service? Okay, thanks. Childcare fund is the last, I'm sorry, I clicked too. Childcare fund highlights. Childcare fund, this includes our latch key and our paid tuition preschool. GSRP is part of general fund, so this is just latch key and paid tuition preschool. We do offer latch key at both elementary, we added Oakwood this year. Hour 6:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. school days, we charge $5.50 an hour. We do have a summer latch key, last year, summer of '19, we had about 50 students participate. Our per force school participation on average, we have 55 students that participate, not every day, but throughout the year. After school, about 40 students. Our tuition preschool student number was 89. And we have been rated best of the best for the last four years. These numbers I got from Diane. Our financials on our childcare, this year, this one did take a hit due to the school shutdown and we were not collecting tuition from mid-March on, but we were still providing classroom learning, virtual learning to our students. So 1920, we're looking at about a $72,000 operating deficit. I do want to say that Diane has applied for some grant money. If we get approved, that would offset that 72. If we get approved, we would, it would be about 45,000. Because I have not seen any approval, I did not include that. So that would definitely make that better. 2021, we're looking at about 9,000. I did reduce both expenditure and I reduced revenue for next year. The number of students currently is below what we had this year. So again, because of the circumstances, there is a good chance that we will have less students next year in our tuition-based childcare program. So our fund balance will end this year at zero and next year at zero. We did come into this year with a fund balance, so the operating transfer from general fund this year will just be 6,955 because we have a 65, currently have a $65,000 fund balance. The rules are you just have to transfer enough so that there's no deficit. So we'll transfer about 7,000 unless we get that grant money. And then next year, it gets a little bit worse. The, we're looking at a general fund transfer next year of about, excuse me, 41,643. And again, that's based on lower enrollment and we haven't made any, any other reductions that possibly may happen if our enrollment stays low. So that's where we stand right now with our childcare fund. I think everyone's aware that, again, we cannot run a deficit in our childcare or food service. The general fund has to transfer to make those funds whole.
And if I could say, thank you Diane for running such a great program and getting all this, thank you very much and being four years in a row minimum, so.
Yep.
I have a question, is that 41,000 reflected way up above when you said the transfer for next year?
Yeah, that was the 41,000 I had up on the general fund as part of the assumptions from general fund expenditures, that 41,000 would be an expenditure to the general fund. It's reflected as revenue to childcare and expenditure to general fund.
Okay, anybody else got any questions? And I only see part of you, so.
No, I'm good.
Okay, well, thank you, and just one last thing, I anticipate doing a budget amendment, maybe even August, September. But, you know, maybe not, but once we know enrollment and certainly once if the state deviates from the $500 assumption, definitely will want to take a look at the budget again, so.
And Jan, they have not said anything. We came up with that thinking we'd be safe, correct? They've not.
Well, there was a lot of, no, most districts, based on the revenue estimating conference in May and looking at the shortfall in the school aid fund, it was estimated maybe up to $700. We feel that 700 is a little much, so we went with 500, but.
But again, no decision's been made.
No decisions, that's correct, no decisions have been made on 1920 or 2021. The clock has started ticking on 1920. Once they're informed up at the state, they have 30 days to make a decision, we talked about that last week. If the legislature does not figure out a way to fund the school aid fund, then the proration automatically is implemented. That's for the 1920.
Okay, thank you Jan for all the work you're doing also.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to stop share here. Okay.
Okay, next I have our action items. Could I get an approval for the Oakwood Elementary 5th grade students' overnight trip, hopefully to Mackinac City?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the Oakland Elementary 5th grade students' overnight trip to Mackinac City, May 2021.
Support.
Okay, any discussion on that? This is year, typically yearly that they've gone. All those in favor, I will do a roll call for a vote, please.
Sarah Allen. Can you hear me, Sarah?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Sorry, I couldn't hear. John Chartier? I think I saw him.
Yes.
Thank you. Melissa Clark, yes. Mary Ann Dwyer.
Yeah.
Lisa Cavalluna.
Yes.
Kevin McClellan.
Yes.
Diane Salter.
Yes. Okay, next, can I get a motion for the approval of a 2020, the 2021 ice hockey cooperative agreement?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the 2020-2021 ice hockey cooperative agreement with Notre Dame Prep as presented.
Support.
Okay, discussion on that?
So Chris Dynas is here. Ray, do you want to allow him to speak?
He's on. Chris?
Chris, are you there? Yeah, I am, can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right, awesome. Thank you for allowing me to chat for a minute. Yeah, the, we've actually had a cooperative agreement for many years with Kersley, Lake Fenton, and Holly. Unfortunately, the last two seasons between the four schools, we have just not been able to field a team. Notre Dame Prep reached out to us and they are looking for a school to help them save their program and we have about a handful of kids, five or six kids, want to play hockey, so this is a great opportunity for them to continue to play hockey for their high school
Absolutely. Last I knew, one of our, is a 2015 grad, Mr. Fleeson is playing for the Dallas Stars, last I knew, or it's in their farming, so we have very good talent up there.
Yes, for sure.
Okay, anybody got any questions for Chris?
I do have one question, are they going to be playing under the umbrella of Notre Dame Prep, Brandon Schools, or is it a different team name for the two teams, schools coming together?
For the first year, because Notre Dame Prep already has an established program, we will be under the Notre Dame umbrella. Obviously, they will try to incorporate as much of the Brandon colors and logo that they can, but obviously to save budget and costs, they're not going to buy new uniforms for next year. We're just going to jump in their program and then down the line, this is a two-year agreement that we have the opportunity to renew every two years. As we move forward, yes, we can work to incorporate some more Brandon blue into the Notre Dame green.
Where's the home ice?
Home ice will be at Troy Sports Complex.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions? Okay, if I could get a roll call vote, please.
Sarah Allen. John Chartier.
Yes.
Melissa Clark, yes. Mary Ann Dwyer.
Yeah.
Lisa Cavalluna.
Yes.
Kevin McClellan.
Yes.
Diane Salter.
Yes. Okay, motion passes, great job, thanks Chris.
Thank you, everyone.
Take care. Okay, next, can I get a motion for the adoption of the final 2019-2020 budget?
I move the Brandon Board of Education adopt the final 2019-2020 budget as presented.
Support.
Okay, any discussion, I know we just went over this. Okay, Melissa, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Sarah Allen.
Yes.
John Chartier.
Yes.
Melissa Clark, yes. Mary Ann Dwyer.
Yeah.
Lisa Cavalluna.
Yes.
Kevin McClellan.
Yes.
Diane Salter.
Yes. Motion passes. Could I get a motion for the proposed 2020-2021 budget?
I move the Board to accept the proposed 2021 budget as presented.
Support.
Any discussion on that? Okay, Melissa, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Sarah Allen? John Chartier?
Yes.
Melissa Clark, yes. Mary Ann Dwyer?
Yeah.
Lisa Cavalluna?
Yes.
Kevin McClellan?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes. Motion passes. Could I get a motion for the approval of the 2020 tax levy?
I move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the 2020 tax levy as presented. Support.
Okay, any discussion on that? Okay, Melissa, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Sarah Allen? John Chartier?
Yes.
Melissa Clark, yes. Mary Ann Dwyer?
Yeah.
Lisa Cavalluna?
Yes.
Kevin McClellan?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes. Motion passes. Next on our agenda, I got citizens input. Maria?
There is no one in the Q and A asking any questions?
Okay, thank you. Could I get a motion to go into closed session for attorney-client privileged information, please?
I move we go into closed session for attorney-client privileged information.
Support.
And if I could get a roll call vote, please.
Sarah Allen?
Yes.
John Chartier?
Yes.
Melissa Clark, yes. Mary Ann Dwyer?
Yeah.
Lisa Cavalluna?
Yes.
Kevin McClellan?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes. Motion passes. There's another link we got to hook up to, it should be in your email.